Welcome to our commission meeting, meeting. We had a great fair week last. Sure, most of you got a chance to attend at some point. I got to go three different times and it's always... Every time I see those four H kids that come back and say something nice about them, probably gonna do it again because they're just so impressive. They work so hard to bring their animals to the fair and have them auctioned off and how sad they are when they go. The three of us had the opportunity not to win the grand champion this year. Somebody got crazy and bid it up to like eighteen thousand dollars. That did pretty close. Stace was getting nervous. We did win the reserve grand champion auction and just appreciate the opportunity to help those kids. I understand from folks at the fair that I saw on Friday that it was, the auction was really successful this year. So it's a big deal for those kids. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to get out. Beautiful week. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to get out and enjoy it. So here we are post-fair week, ready to roll. So first thing we have is an introduction of the new employee, Taylor Forker. Is that right? Forker, Parker?
Forker.
Forky, Forkay? Forker, Taylor Forker. And Ody even told me ahead of time how to pronounce it and then I started messing around with it and so I messed it up. Sorry, Taylor. Please introduce your sir or Stace, you can introduce her if you'd like, or Taylor, you're gonna have to speak at some point, so.
Oh, she will not have any problem speaking. So everyone, this is Taylor Forker. She is new to our staff and she will be the financial analyst and I'll let her speak.
I come from the Treasure Estate. I was downtown with them for two years, when I was with Huntington for seven. I coach volleyball here locally. I helped my mom run a club volleyball team. That's like my hobby that I love to do and I'm from Amanda, so.
Is your team any good?
Uh, I love, yeah, we were.
It changes year to year.
Yeah, year to year it changes, so, yeah.
Welcome to the team. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Stace, you're not allowed to retire for another seven years?
Understood.
Right.
I think she just said understood.
All right, well, Taylor, welcome. Glad to have you on the team. Will you be participating in our budget meetings the rest of the?
I will. She'll be in this afternoon.
All right. All right, so over the past several weeks, we've been talking about the Hunger Games of generosity between our JFS group and the Developmental Disabilities Group. I have a little press release to read here. Today, we're here to celebrate the conclusion of Fairfield County Hunger Games, a friendly competition between Fairfield County Job and Family Services and the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. First, let me say thank you. While this event has been filled with good-natured rivalry, laughter, and maybe even a little trash talk, the heart behind it has been very serious, fighting hunger in our community. In Fairfield County, hunger is a real issue. Where twenty thousand residents, including nearly six thousand children, struggle with food insecurity. It's one in ten of our neighbors who may not know where their next meal will come from. Our food pantries work tirelessly to bridge that gap and they need, the need continues to grow. That's why this competition matters. Every can and every box, every dollar raised for this challenge goes directly to helping our pantries stock their shelves and ensuring that families, children, and seniors in Fairfield County do not go hungry. I know what you're all waiting for, to hear which team will walk away with the bragging rights and the trophy as the 2025 Hunger Games champion. Congratulations to Fairfield County JFS. Your dedication, creativity, and generosity have set the bar high. And to our runner-up, thank you because truly in this competition, there are no losers. Together, you've made a lasting impact. So while today we hand out a title and enjoy a little victory celebration, let's remember the real winners are the families who will sit down to a meal tonight because of your efforts. Thank you for showing what happens when humor, heart, and community come together. I understand that over four thousand items were collected over the competition, twenty-eight hundred plus by JFS, so that's really a big deal. And just wanted to thank Cory and David for your generosity and your teams and all this great work. And Cory, you gotta come up and get the trophy and make a big speech.
All I don't hand it to. Oh, I can't wait. As I saw the trophy, I was wondering if I was really that sad about having lost it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good speech. This is something that we've been training for, for years. A lot of early mornings and late nights, putting in the work to get to this point. But in all seriousness, we raised, or we collected forty-four hundred items for this. And just to put that into some perspective, JFS has been doing this internally as kind of a competition for a number of years and our highest total was around fifteen hundred. So to get almost another three thousand items, doing this competition and having a great time doing it, I think it was well worth it. Something that we're, they've been having some discussions about maybe growing it next year, so we look forward to that. Thank you, David, and your team for all of your efforts. A very fine showing for your first year.
Yes, thank you. We learned a lot. We saw how to do it now after this year. And I'll just mention, not only congratulations to Cory, but Cory thinks that the sheriff's office is on far too much of a roll here lately with regard to their accumulation of awards. They've won several things. They won the really good thing. They've won something else recently, I think two other things. And so there may be a challenge out in your way. We may expand this out so that it's much more than us too and much more than four thousand, but it's another county agency. Discussions are ongoing. We'll see what happens.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
You do?
Maybe it's game first, relax.
It's a friendly competition.
They're all close.
That's Curtis from two-one-one. I wasn't able to be here today, so that is what Jeff was reading, but she did make us promise to his picture.
Ready? One, two, three. Two. Nice job, fellas. All right, so the next thing we have on our agenda is public comments. If you'd like to address the commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes as we have a very full day today. Morning, Ray.
Didn't make it on time. The beautiful day out there, we've had a lot of those this fall. And no reason not to be feeling good about getting up in the morning and looking for another day. So with that thought in mind, I want to go to prayer. Lord, we thank you for the provision we have coming before you this morning in prayer. Thanking you for what you've given us throughout the week, the years that we've had in the past. Lord, we look forward to the future and we praise you and thank you for the people that are working here in this office. We praise you, Lord, that they will listen to you and come to you each day to start their day. And they will, we pray, Lord, for guidance and direction through it all. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission's floor? Okay, well, we thank you all for being here. Legal update, Amy Brown Thompson.
Morning. Mr. President?
Yes.
I appreciate the lack of an update, but I just wanted to thank the prosecutor's office because they have been extremely helpful trying to get some issues resolved with the major crimes unit. And I could have done it without you, but I'd had to break the law.
Well, we don't want that.
No, let's do it a different way this time.
Right. Thank you.
Right. County administration update, Ody?
Oh, great. So the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals and we have thirteen resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. Couple resolutions of note to share with you. There is one to establish the date and time for a viewing and a hearing for a petition to vacate a segment of an alley in Greenfield Township. It's a resolution to establish a new debt service fund for the state infrastructure bank loan for the Basel Western Road project. The auditor's office has a resolution to rescind a resolution from last week that duplicated a memo receipt memo expense. Regional planning has a resolution to certify consistency of the Fairfield Metropolitan Housing Authority's annual plan with Fairfield County's Community Housing Improvement Strategy. And then the sheriff's office has a resolution to authorize the donation of a vehicle from the city of Canal Winchester to Hawking Township that is titled in the county's name. Heard any budget update?
Well, thanks, looking forward to the second week.
All right, thank you. Rochelle, counter- review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. MCU has a governing board meeting on October fifteenth. The Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency Board of Directors meeting is October sixteenth, eleven-thirty. Family and Children First Council has an executive committee meeting on October seventeenth at eight-thirty. The following invitations were received. The Next Gen Training Center ribbon cutting ceremony will be November fourth at one P.M. at the Fairfield Career Center. And the 2025 Fairfield County Economic Update will be December twelfth at eight M at the Fairfield County Workforce Center. The commissioners received the following correspondence, a letter from a constituent saying congratulating Commissioner Lavesey, the Morphsey return on investment documents for 2025, and an annexation petition for point five-nine plus or minus acres from Walnut Township to the Village of Thurston. The agent for the petitioner is Brian Zetz. That is all they have.
Okay. Rochelle, will you counter me for that?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, updates from elected officials and department heads. Derek Davis, do you have anything for United Way?
Campaign season.
How's it going? How's the campaign going?
Going well so far. We're right about on pace where we were last year, about four hundred thousand dollars right now. Still waiting on a lot of workplace campaigns to prepare, so.
Do you feel like the campaign shares you have this year are a little bit of an anchor?
They're the driving force behind us.
Tiffany?
Our annual meeting is coming up November twenty eighth, eight-thirty at Allen Park. If anybody is interested. The Family and Children First Council, in partnership with the county or leadership, is putting upon a treaty for the Plan of Safety here at Florence on October twenty-fourth at the center. The safety areas, it's a plan that we are here to allow to help keep babies safe and healthy when they're involved with using. So if anybody needs to go up, also there are, a treaty.
Thank you. Holly? Chad?
Couple things. The Farm Servants Agency and Natural Resource Conservation Service offices are still closed due to the government shutdown that's going on out there. And then I think we've reported, talked about this before, but Fairfield Union, their FFA, qualified for the state soil judgment contest. They placed fourteenth out of fifty-one teams in the agricultural soil judgment portion and they placed twelve out of forty-nine teams on the urban soil judgment contest. So congratulations to them.
Good. Thanks. Lisa McKenzie?
Morning. I recently had some interview or some work processed with our vendor. They have a program that they use in other states that I'm going to pilot in Ohio to see if it will better serve us for protecting specific records that are not public records. And so we're looking forward to see how that works out and see if we can get it rolling out to some of the other counties.
Cool. When are you starting that?
November.
All right. Better on the corner. Did, like to hear updates on it. Jeremiah?
So we, it's getting to be that time of year, we had our, our ready build Friday before last, which is where we get the snow plows out, set up some challenging obstacles for the guys, kind of get them back into the groove of maneuvering, one of those big trucks with the snow plow, which really is something that takes some skill. We had a few people come out from other agencies to drive a truck. Lisa was one of them. She had fun. We appreciate that. Other than that, we're finishing up construction season. Commissioner Lavesey, you'd asked me about Stray Town Road weeks ago. We didn't manage to get that open and, and we're continuing with doing plans and using up the emergency money that Fairfield Township got for the replacement of that, but it is open in the time being and it is safe. So that's what's going on with us.
So can I ask a question?
Please.
Do they like to drive a truck this year?
Uh, no.
I just wonder.
Any word on two oh four Milner?
Two oh four Milner. I don't have an update for you, but I'll get you.
Thank you for being here today. Dr. Brown?
Good morning. One of the aspects that legislators have commented in Fairfield County that is very positive is transparency we have in terms of when items go on the ballot. And we have issued four different fact sheets for levies that are on the ballot in November here from Madison Township, Rust Creek Township, Violet Township, and Holden Township Local School District. The fact sheets will tell you specifically what the levy is for, what it means to you as an individual, and what it means to the entity. And those will be part of a press release, and I believe you already have copies of those. Each of the entities had copies of them as well. It's just the facts approach and they appreciated the information that was provided for public consumption as well. October fifteenth is the deadline for the tax abstract. That's much earlier than it has been in the past, presumably so that the state can react to various different legislative changes that may come about yet this year. And we will meet that deadline. There will be many counties who do not, but we can say forthrightly that we are doing everything we can to get information as quickly as possible and be good collaborators in that process. On Sunday, I attended a class with the Decorative Arts Center. And if you haven't had a chance to see their most recent exhibit, you might want to do that. It has two different approaches. One, traditional art that relates to food, a common denominator for all of us, and then also several different archived cookbooks that show the culture of cooking and some very unique recipes that you could take home with you. And one, I'll mention, I did try it. It was a tomato soup spice cake. It has no eggs and it's one of those inexpensive kind of cakes and it's actually very good.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Okay. Rick? That's so serious.
Good. So last night, the Holden Township School Board passed a waiver for the forty-five day notice for the Dania Shadow Center project. That's not the way that was passed last week, but it's a federal deal. And the state also threw CSX exemption. They really approached the quarter to this reality. There were some articles that have been out about this. There was a comment about the previous power supplier removing their application. Ohio, our citing board, that's just because a different power provider will be there instead. So that's the only change there. And so there are questions about resources. There's enough water, there's enough sewer, probably some upgrading of those plants. They're all good. Or a trade of land, proving a water plant and the energy will be provided through this natural best power. So I'm totally accurate, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Here, close, millions of dollars of payroll and a few improvements. Serious. Not yet, working closer and all of the help from Josh, prosecutor's office, and the future of that.
Appreciate our work on that important project. I think it's really cool how you're looking up in, it's a little bit like a sundial. Can always can tell.
This is, this is our key time.
Yeah. Time, coaches?
That's why you're late.
Coach?
I'm not familiar with you.
Ian?
Our cybersecurity training marches on for this month. We're at sixty-eight percent completion and we're smack dab in the middle of the month, so we're a little over half complete, but we're at the middle of the month. So encouraging folks to proceed with getting that completed as well. Windows ten goes out of official support this month, so we're down to sixteen devices that we're, you know, picking out and working with departments to kind of see what the options for work. Any of those either upgraded, replaced, what have you. So things are looking good.
Thank you. Cory?
I just want to give a quick update about some changes to SNAP eligibility rules from the federal level. And they, as of July, they identified ten groups of non-citizens that alone would be eligible for SNAP. And, and that in Fairfield County, you determined that there are a hundred and seventeen individuals who will be impacted by that. So just, that's making place, that's the impact in Fairfield County.
Okay. Jeff Porter?
We had a successful benefits fair last week. We had over a hundred individuals attend. Open enrollment, November third through the tenth.
Cool. Old business, Commissioner Davis?
I had mentioned earlier how helpful the prosecutor's office has been with regard to the major crimes unit. Looking forward to the governing board meeting tomorrow, or we'll finalize some go-forward policies. I should also give a shout out to county administrator Cordell, who's taken on an inordinate amount of burden throughout this process of resolution. And I just appreciate her and look forward to a successful meeting tomorrow on that.
Commissioner Lavesey?
So we're, we're about a month away from our induction ceremony for the Virginia County Veterans Hall of Fame. That'll be November thirteenth at the center out there on Sheridan Drive.
What's the name of that place?
I can't remember. Davis Center? Right there's where it is.
The Lavesey Center, he just doesn't like saying it.
But regardless, there's been a, many people involved in helping with this. We're down to getting all the invitations completed and so on. So anybody who would like to come, we would love to have you attend. There'll be a meal. There's a fifty-dollar cost for basically the cost of the meal. And I have a caterer that's very good, very good food. And we have about twenty-eight or twenty-nine inductees, six of whom are Congressional Medal Honor winners, including somebody like William Tecumseh Sherman. Obviously, everybody knows him. And there's ten living recipients, including Lance Meyer, which is Brandon's father, General Meyer, and then Don McDaniel, who will be new inductees on November sixth to those Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame. So love to have everybody come. Have a good showing. I have General John Harris, that will be the keynote speaker again. Love to have everybody come. Thank you.
Thank you. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak to the, one of the Lancaster Rotary Clubs, the lunch club, I'm not sure what the names are, but appreciate the invitation. It was the second event held at the new Lavesey Center. And, you know, when we were there the first time, it was kind of filled up and it was really cool. But when you see it empty, it's pretty awesome, like how big it is. And even though it was only like fifty-nine degrees in there, the place was cold. It was cold, yeah. Appreciate the Rotary Clubs, both of them, and all the service clubs around Fairfield County that just volunteer their time and their efforts in, you know, trying to help people out, right? So thank you for the invitation. Joy being there. New business, I have none. Commissioner Lavesey?
It's not necessarily new business since the subject we brought up about the Lavesey Center. You brought it up. Very, 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 quite frankly, it's, nothing's ever happened in my life quite like this. But I sincerely appreciate Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Fix, on Cordell, others who decided to do this. I don't know why, but.
Yeah, you did.
I, I'm beyond appreciative. I'm horrified.
What's yours? Commissioner Davis, new business?
Just a couple things. One, I've never worked as long. Anybody who is as deserving as Commissioner Lavesey for that honor, so I don't, I don't know what else a person could do to deserve something like that of what you've done. I'm excited to say that after seven years of retirement, I found something to do. I'm volunteering at the festival office and I'm excited to get in there and try to be helpful and be a part of the team.
Cool. All right, so now we will go to our voting pattern. If you all would rise if you're able. I'm just, I'm just agents.
By the legions, we defy from the United States of America and through the Republic or which it stands, one nation under God, and universal deliver the feet of justice for all.
Thank you. Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the October seventh regular meeting? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, those minutes are approved. Is there a motion for the approval of the budget hearing minutes for October seventh?
So move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, those minutes are approved. And is there a motion for the approval of the afternoon budget hearing minutes from October seventh?
So move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, those minutes are approved as well. Rochelle?
Thank you. From the Commissioners, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot A, a resolution to consider a petition to vacate a portion of an unapproved public road in Greenfield Township and establish a viewing and hearing date.
Under Commissioners, I move Resolutions A, B, C. Second.
Discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County on major board, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot D, resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into major expense object category twenty-sixty-six.
So move.
Discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot E, a resolution for approval to rescind Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot seven dot S, memo receipt memo expense duplication.
So move.
Discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot M, resolution to approve reimbursement for sheriff costs for ethernet services paid to AT&amp;T as the memo expenditure for Fund twenty-sixty, Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Fairfield County Court of Developmental Disabilities, I move Resolution F and G.
Second. Discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Court of Common Plea, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot H, resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into major expenditure object category Fund twenty-seven sixty-one, Law, Library, and Resources.
Second. Discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot I, resolution authorizing approval repayment of an advance to the general fund from EMA twenty-eight ninety, FY twenty-twenty-two, year three hazardous materials. FY twenty-twenty-two, year three hazardous materials emergency planning rate.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot J. A resolution to certify consistency of the Fairfield Metropolitan Housing Authority twenty-twenty-six annual plan with the Fairfield County's community housing improvement stretch.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? There's discussion. Hearing now, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot K. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into major expenditure object category twenty-nine oh nine Marine Patrol Grant.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff, I move resolutions K and L.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten dot fourteen dot M. A resolution authorized the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need commissioner's approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call please.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for October twenty-first at nine A M.
Okay, so, um, we have budget hearings throughout the morning and afternoon. Um, John, I'm gonna ask if you're available to do your EMA budget and facilities budget. If we take a twenty-seven minute recess and reset the room, would you be available at, uh, ten o'clock to do those hearings? And then Jeremiah, yours is noted at eleven, so we'll do that at eleven o'clock. Good?
Eleven o'clock.
That's good. Alright, so, uh, we are in recess until ten o'clock. Thank you.